My name is Houston. Can you announce?
So who, who did you say you do this with?
Ms. Terry, you pulled first in that, so just...
Yeah.
You think so? One, one...
Call to order. Invocation.
Everyone by you there. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to gather here today to conduct city business. I pray that you grant us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to move the city in the right direction. I pray that you continue to protect the police and fire department, the city employees, and all the citizens of Gonzales. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Terry.
Councilwoman Tyler Turner.
Here.
Councilwoman Terry Lambert.
Here.
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 Number five. Recognize the girls Bayou Ballers Flag Football State Championship. Come on, Jared. Yes, sir. You can say something, Jared.
All right, everybody. I'm Jared LaBeaufort from the Bayou Ballers Flag Football. This is my 12U and 14U all-girls travel teams. 12U is currently ranked number two in the United States. And, and, thank you. And, uh, 14U is currently ranked number one in the United States. So, uh, I want, if y'all don't mind, I want to give a second just for the girls to introduce themselves and tell you what position they play. Start with them.
I'm Ellen Pomor and I play center and, um, rusher.
I'm taking the ball and I play rusher.
I'm if we're going to play rusher.
I'm going to play rusher.
I'm running late and I play corner.
I'm Emily T. who I play linebacker.
I'm Jason who I play quarterback.
I'm Drew Winston and I play corner and wide receiver.
I'm Amy Lee who's saying I play quarterback.
I'm tonight I'm playing quarterback.
Great. This is my head coach right here, Mr. Carl Tyson. So the, the girls all have on medals here. Everyone won a gold medal in Gatlinburg, Tennessee last month. Uh, this is their 12U and 14U trophies from the Rockin' Mound Gauntlet out in Gatlinburg, Tennessee last month. Uh, if y'all don't mind, I'd like for my head coach to say a few words about the team.
I mean, I can't say much more than just about how much, uh, really I'm just proud of them. I mean, they put in the work, they put in the time, effort, dedication, they're very coachable. I mean, that's all you can ask for as a coach, right? I mean, there's only so much that I can do as a coach. It's on them. That's really where all the credit is due right there.
Those girls.
They're hardworking.
This is not all fifty states. We rank number one and I'm two.
Yes, we did a big picture with council and mayor and coaches.
Yeah, me too.
All right, you got ready? I'm going to do the straight forward. Awesome, congratulations, girls.
Good job.
Number six. Proclamation honoring Ms. A. Denise Graves for forty-four years of distinguished service to Ascension Parish School. And I'll read the proclamation. Honoring Ms. A. Denise Graves for forty-four years of distinguished service to Ascension Parish Schools, whereas the foundation of a thriving community rests upon its dedication to educating and nurturing its children. And those who devote their lives to public education serve as pillars of progress, hope, and opportunity. Whereas Ms. A. Denise Graves has amplified this noble calling through an extraordinary forty-four-year career in Ascension Parish School, marked by unravering commitment, visionary leadership, and a deep passion for students' success and equality. And whereas, a proud, longtime resident of the city of Gonzales, Ms. Graves has been a trailblazer in education, making history as the first African-American woman to serve as superintendent of Ascension Parish High School, and previously as the highest-ranking African-American in the district as assistant superintendent. And whereas, she has served with distinction in numerous leadership roles, including presby of Gonzales Middle School, where she inspires students, empowers educators, and fosters a culture of academic excellence and community pride. And whereas, Ms. Graves has been a quite-yet-powerful force behind the scenes, a trusted leader whose wisdom, humility, and steadfast dedication has left an inedible mark on generations of students, educators, and administration. And whereas, her legacy as a pioneer mentor and advocate for equality in education continues to uplift and inspire those who follow in her footsteps. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we, with deep gratitude and admiration, do hereby recognize and honor Ms. A. Denise Graves for her outstanding service, groundbreaking achievements, and lifelong commitment to the students and families of Ascension Parish. Let this proclamation stand as a testament to her enduring impact and the celebration of a career that has shaped the future of education in our community. Okay, Thompson, if y'all would like to have a picture as well?
Sure.
Come on, chief.
All right.
All right, got it.
Yes, ma'am. I just asked if this mayor could say a word simply because I was overwhelmed. My sororesses are here, my family's here, my predating family, one of my very first students was here. A lady that was an inspiration, that was a principal, a leader here, one of my father's first cousins here. So I'm just overwhelmed. I was really just expecting to run in and run out and call y'all a card. You know better. But anyway, there's no better place to be than Ascension Parish. To the city of Gonzales for what they do for all of our children. We have strong leaders here that are present before you right now. We have strong leadership right now, and we've always had strong leadership. All I ask is that we continue to make sure that Ascension Parish is strong and that the city of Gonzales does a fight for every single child in this parish. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, before we move on, I'd like to see if we could amend the agenda tonight to talk, uh, to discuss the new city hall hours with the new four-day work week, uh, that you put in place. And I don't have a problem with the four-day hours a week. I would like to see if we can move to maybe put a skeleton crew in city hall on Fridays to service the people if they need.
Yeah, we worked that out. That hasn't been worked out.
So we have people here on Friday?
Yes, sir.
Morning?
Yep. We worked that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Number seven. Approve the minutes of a public hearing of the mayor and the city council taken on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Make the motion to approve.
I second.
Yes.
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 Number eight. Approve the minutes of a regular meeting of the mayor and the city council taken on July fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yes.
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 Number nine. Approval of a special event permit request by Pastor Tina Russo with Heavenly Hope South Ministry to have a back-to-school giveaway bash on September, I'm sorry, on Saturday, August two, August second, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to four PM in the parking lot at seventeen twenty-one South Burnside Avenue. Is Ms. Tina here?
All right, all right, Ms. Tina. Go ahead. Yes, we want to do a back-to-school, um, in the community. We just moved to Gonzales maybe three months ago. Our ministry was in Prairieville. So we have five ministries and we're all over the state, including Charlotte now. So we want to do haircuts, um, hairstyles, we have snowballs, we've gotten many sponsors. And so we want to make sure that, um, we give back to our community. And so we want to do that August the second. We do realize they have something going on at the PACE Center, but we want to be there for the parents who can't do it. And haircuts now are thirty-five dollars for kids. So we have local barbers who's going to commit their time on Saturday and including Sunday after church.
Sounds good.
That's in the parking lot where Chip's grocery is?
Yes, ma'am.
Where it's going to be?
Chief Goodwood? You good? Make the motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, go forward, please. Councilwoman Turner.
Yes.
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 Number ten. Approval of a community partnership with Ascension Parish Re-Entri Coalition for the use of the civic center from seven AM to twelve PM on Saturday, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, to have the Drive Into Recovery Outreach Event.
Hi, I'm Heather Pennington from Probation and Poll representing the Ascension Parish Re-Entry Coalition. What we do as a coalition is we strive to reduce recidivism within Ascension Parish and make our community safer. We have recently partnered with Capital Area Human Services and we would like to host one of their drive-through recovery events at the civic center, the Gonzales Civic Center on September twenty-seventh. If you're not familiar with the drive-through recovery events, it's essentially a mobile resource fair, um, bringing mental health, substance abuse recovery resources, general wellness resources to the community. It's open to the community, it's not targeted towards any specific population. We would just like to request use of mainly the parking lot but the civic center for that morning.
Have a motion and a second.
A motion to approve.
I have a second.
So it's just in the parking lot?
We will use the building for the volunteers, the restroom facilities, but the actual event will take place in the parking lot.
You don't have any food trucks out there, do you?
No.
I'll go ahead and second that, I guess. I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Turner.
Yes.
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 I'm, uh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number eleven. Approve the request to terminate an ESCRO agreement between SLC LLC and the city of Gonzales regarding a retention pond associated with the Orleans Place subdivision.
Good afternoon, my name is Latrice Hardy. I am acting in the capacity of the engineering department for the city of Gonzales representing all south consultant engineers, and I am recommending the city's legal review in this matter determining the, um, need to terminate the ESCRO agreement with Dwight Poirier, who is also here to see more on it, in the city of Gonzales.
Thank you, Mrs. Latrice. Good evening, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Counsel. This is a ESCRO agreement that was, uh, created, uh, a number of years ago that, uh, was created by my client, SLC LLC. I'm holding the, uh, funds for this ESCRO agreement. But, uh, after this ESCRO agreement was entered into, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, in July of two thousand twenty-two, this, uh, development was sold to D.R. Horton and, uh, this ESCRO agreement or, or the, the obligations of this ESCRO agreement was transferred to the D.R. Horton, uh, buyer and, and Orleans Place Homeowners Association. And, uh, what's happened is this money's just sitting there and I'm just trying to clean up basically my ESCRO account. The obligations for the, for the, for the, uh, what the ESCRO account was initially, uh, deemed to protect, those obligations have been transferred and, uh, Orleans Place Homeowners Association is now the responsible party to, uh, cut the grass, take care of the retention pond, take care of the other common areas. So we had made a request to, uh, terminate this. Uh, I know there were some questions and I, I worked with Mr. Davis and, and, uh, got him some information and got, got some others some information regarding, uh, this, this, uh, this obligation. So what we're trying to do is, it's not a lot of money, it's twenty-four thousand dollars, which I'm holding in my, in my client account, and we're asking that the, the ESCRO agreement be released. We wouldn't release it without the, the council and the mayor's approval. So we're, we're here in good faith just, uh, requesting it be terminated and, uh, any obligations or whatever from the July eighteen, twenty twenty-two point forward fall upon the, uh, Orleans Place, uh, Homeowners Association. upon the, uh, Orleans Place, uh, Homeowners Association. Uh, I think they have a, 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 a group that's, that they've hired to handle some of this stuff, and, uh, we're certainly glad to share information or, or do what we need to do, um, to, to help you guys, but at this point, we're just trying to clean up some old business from our end, some old records and stuff.
So y'all sold it in two thousand twenty-two?
We sold it in July eighteen, twenty twenty-two.
Alan, what, what's your legal on this?
Well, my, my opinion is, uh, SLC has no legal obligation on the property. So if there's an issue with the retention pond or, uh, the maintenance thereof, that falls on the, uh, homeowners association and not the SLC. Uh, I think SLC, when they sold it back in July eighteen of twenty twenty-two, didn't divest any interest, any obligation whatsoever as it relates to the retention pond.
D.R. Horton took it?
Yes, sir. D.R. Horton was the purchaser of the entire subdivision. They created a homeowners association, which, which actually signed an agreement, which, uh, assumed and, and obligated themselves to take care of any of the obligations under the Drainage and Servitude Agreement, and, and also agreed at that point to identify and hold SLC harmless from any of those obligations, uh, from the, uh, from the agreement. So, uh, we certainly are, we want to be good citizens, and we'll, we'll help whatever possible. Uh, we just have this old ESCRO agreement, which, um, it's not, it's not really doing anything at this point. We're just trying to release it. It's not a lot of money, but it's a, it's more of a headache than a, than a benefit.
And since the ESCRO has been in place, has, has there been any requests that the ESCRO be utilized to maintain the, the pond?
No, sir. We, we start the ESCRO with estimating, uh, two thousand four hundred dollars a month, I mean, a year, and we had twenty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, checking the balance today, it was twenty-four thousand, one dollar in the, uh, ESCRO accounts. It's, uh, it's cluttering up my ESCRO account, and I'm just, just trying to get it, it's really more, more, more to help me, I guess, than anything else. I hate to say it that way, but...
So legally, we couldn't hold them bonded to it?
The, it would be with only homeowners association. Uh, so, no.
Would it be D.R. Horton or would it be Legacy?
Yeah, so D.R. Horton, my understanding, purchased it from SLC, correct?
Correct.
To develop the property. But once the property was developed, D.R. Horton is no longer involved in the property itself, or is it strictly with the homeowners association?
I think, I think all of those lots, I'm sorry, I cut you off there. I think all those lots have been sold and, and developed, uh, developed by D.R. Horton. So my understanding is there's, there's homeowners association dues that's paid into the, uh, the, the association, and this is not an association with swimming pools to run and all that kind of stuff. The primary obligation is, is to take care of the residents, uh, and, and, and that biggest responsibility is probably that retention pond. And, uh, I, I'm sure we can, we can, we can assist with that. They do have a, um, a management company that they hired, but that management company is funded through the homeowners association. Uh, of course, the management company doesn't have legal responsibility to, to us, they would have it to, to, to the homeowners association, but the homeowners association is the responsible party, party moving forward, so.
So my understanding is, is SLC and Mr. Poirier's client has no responsibility whatsoever to the property? No legal responsibility, that is. So my recommendation would be to allow the, uh, ESCRO agreement to aspire, um, to, uh, to allow the homeowners association to take on any liability whatsoever as it relates to the retention pond.
Instead of SLC?
Yeah, legally, I don't know if...
If we can.
Well, if a homeowner is damaged because of lack of maintenance on the retention pond, their claim would be against, uh, the homeowners association.
So we'd have to go up with them?
Correct. Well, the, the homeowners would, correct.
Okay.
So the pond is not, uh, it hasn't been maintained?
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
I went, I went to take a look at the pond and everything today, you know, it's overgrown, need to be, um, maintained and different things. So the responsibility basically falls back on Legacy's management, right?
The homeowners association, correct.
Okay.
So it's, it's been three years, July twenty twenty-two, you said?
It's been, it's been three years. There were a couple of issues since we sold it, uh, going back, uh, that were addressed. We had some sloughing of the retention pond that was fixed, uh, but that was not handled by us, that was handled by the homeowners association. Because as of that July eighteenth date, we were, we were out. I say we, but my client was out, so.
So if legal's telling us that y'all don't have any responsibility, I mean, we have no choice, correct?
Well, I mean, I definitely have a choice, but my, my legal opinion is that SLC is not liable for anything involving that property whatsoever.
I mean, we could have to give it to them. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second.
Roll call votes. Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Labor.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Cynthia Bragg. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Number twelve, introduction of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter eleven, Garbage, Trash, Weeds, and Waste, Article three, Weeds and Grass, Section eleven, five, eight, one, hay baling.
Hey, ma'am.
Only a introduction, yes.
Yeah, that, that, um, just to explain a little better what that is, um, the, uh, Councilwoman Cynthia asked us, um, to take a look at that. We're having trouble, a lot of the hay balingers are not getting the permit until it's after thirty-six inches, and by the time you add, what's happening with the rain, it's growing another two foot. We just want to add that to what we have, plus the, um, we want to add the, um, the fees included for if it's routine violators, as we do in wet regular grass.
Is that the same thing we've been working on for years?
Correct. We're just adding it to that ordinance, to the hay baling ordinance, as the other one's on.
Yeah, that's the property on Family Thirty, right next to Family Dallas, though.
Yeah, but I just said, we just, we had ordinance before about hay baling.
Right. It's, it's the same, we're just adding the fees to it, that we add to the normal cutters if they don't follow what they're supposed to do.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Number thirteen. It's just an introduction?
Just introduction.
Yeah.
We have a, a public comment on it.
For number twelve?
For number twelve? Yeah. No, number thirteen, number thirteen.
Okay, number thirteen, all right. Introduction, number thirteen, introduction of physical year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, general fund budget. We have, uh, one card that someone wants to speak, Ms. Susan?
Suzanne Williams.
Suzanne?
My name is Suzanne Williams. I live at four oh eight East Sanders Street, and I'm here on behalf of myself and Lonnie Landry, who lives there. He, unfortunately, he couldn't be here, and we haven't got, we haven't delved into his budget issue because he's been diagnosed with cancer. And, um, long story short, he's at work today, and I just want to know why you all haven't been at work trying to figure out this budget issue, you know? I, I don't understand that. I can tell you this, Lonnie and I voted for Tim Riley. I don't know if he's right or wrong in this, but I know that he works toward things, and this is his first term in office. I don't understand why you all aren't working together hard to figure this budget out. Some people had told me it's a racial issue, and God, I hope not, but I will tell you this, Lonnie's surgery is September the ninth, and hopefully everything goes well with him. And after that, we're going to be balls to the wall with money and everything we can do to get the people out that aren't working together, whomever you may be. We've had enough of it. We shouldn't have to worry about this. Are you kidding me? What is the problem? You can't keep this up. You're dealing, we're, we got a budget at my house, and we're dealing with that. I'm just asking you to deal with it or leave, one or the other. That's it.
Thank you. The most speakers? All right, moving on, number fourteen.
We need a, uh, on that, we need a August twenty-fifth public hearing.
Yes, uh, yeah, the public hearing is, uh, gonna be on August twenty-fifth and the final vote on the budget. Number fourteen, Department of Public Works report.
Good evening, all. We'll start off with the Drainage Department. Picking up litter and trash, cutting grass and weed eating, patching holes, straightening up signs, taking care of small miscellaneous drainage work orders. They put in a thirty-six inch cupboard at the end of Sky Avenue. They putting in covets and catch basins on South Roof. They put on a, they put in a cupboard on, uh, O'Reech Rock. They deliver dirt to residents inside the city limits. They digging ditches right now on South Dollar. They sweeping streets. They cleaning their trucks and their equipment. Utility Department, repairing water leaks all over the city, install water and gas meters, got a lot of L.A. one call tickets coming in. They checking water wells and the generators, taking water samples every day. We got a good report from TMB, our water consultant, on our water wells and water towers. DHH took their first round of samples for the month of July. They flushing dirty and mains, and all brown water cars coming in. They cleaning their trucks and their equipment, burying and ground. They cleaning the parks and picking up trash, cutting grass at the baseball fields, keeping them ready to be played on. They repaired a fence at the swimming pool. They fixed, uh, AC leak at, at the DMV. We had an AC leak at the Civic Center, they got fixed. We had the ice machine repaired at the Civic Center, had to shut down the spray park to pressure wash the padding that's around it. And Energy repaired the, um, line we had been having trouble with our generator here at city hall, and they come to find out it was an energy problem, and it was right behind us in the back, back there on the main line coming in. They repaired that, so that took care of the generator problem. And they cleaning their trucks and their equipment. Sewer Department, checking lift stations and generators. They got a lot of L.A. one call tickets coming in. They had to get mission control out for their skater system. Uh, they sprayed grass in the lift stations at the sewer plant. They done a complete rehab on lift station number eight, which is in Southwood subdivision. They cleaned the suction flap at lift station number twenty-six, which is Biden North Seas. They adjusted the floats at lift station number thirty-seven, which is East Grace. They replaced the check valves and O-rings on the pumps at lift station number three, which is on East Rome. They dipped the wet wells at lift station number thirty-four, which is North Allen Highway. They cleaned the troughs at the headworks at the sewer plant. They pooled the pumps at lift station number thirty-eight, which is also on Biden North Seas. We have two lift stations on Biden North Seas. They cleaning their trucks and they are, and they, they equipment also. The guys picked up a hundred and seventy-seven bags of litter the past two weeks, and then we, I had a, a call in about a concerned citizen about the, uh, railroad crossing right there on, on the east corner view right there. So I got in touch with the Kansas City Railroad Company, let them know. The guy got back with me and told me it should be today or tomorrow, they gonna come out and assess it because, you know, they work by work orders just like us, and they just can't, you know, come and put that up before anything else, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
I want to let y'all know I love Gonzalez.
Thank you. Number fifteen, consultant engineer report.
Hello, everybody, I'm back. Nice to see y'all again. So I will be quick and won't hold you. So Freeland Jackson is still under construction. We are still set for our ETA to be at the end of this year. Um, due to the rain weather, we are having some hiccups in progress, which includes our asphalt will be anticipated to be laid within the next two weeks. I am actively working with Ms. Tammy on any grant needs of such. As far as Kennedy Heights, we are recommending a, um, approval for administrative review as well as that, and for our Lady of the Lake Connector. Um, we do have an upcoming meeting on the thirteenth with the OTD for their roundabout. Um, for Heritage Crossings Project, which includes the turning lane and the lift stations, they're gonna be going on kicking off together. We are pending, um, a meeting with the OTD plant, um, after their plan review kickoff, and in the meantime, I have been working with the engineer on discussing lift station design efficiencies. As for the DOTD sidewalk grant, that design is in progress, and we are actively working with DOTD with any of their concerns and requests, including any right-of-way to incorporate in their design. Is there any other questions?
So the Connector Road, St. Elizabeth, where, where are we at, you said?
So we are, um, having a, um, for, there's two, for all the cities, our actual connector road. We're, um, recommending a, um, the administration review for approval, and then the actual DOTD's roundabout for that connector road, um, adjacent to it, they're gonna have a review for their design and incorporate, making sure it loops up with...
You talking about the red lights at?
Yes, and so that may change. We're gonna be discussing that on the thirteenth of August.
Of August?
Yes, with DOTD.
Okay.
Number sixteen, motion to adjourn.
Real quick, uh, I would like, we, I haven't seen, I would like to see before we, if we could get Jacob or somebody to make, I haven't seen financials in three months or sales tax figures. We used to get them in our packet every month. I don't know if you do that, maybe?
Yes, so we actually just picked that up, uh, in probably the last thirty days. Uh, we're just about closed with May financials at this point in time, um...
We used to get like a recap every month?
Yeah.
And then sales tax figures?
That will be coming in your packets. We, we had, we had about two months to catch up on.
I'd like to see them before, you know, two weeks, you know, before we make it, you know?
As soon as we close May, we'll get, we'll get you.
Kind of helps make an decision moving forward, where we at, you know?
Sure thing.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a question about the office hours on Friday. You gonna have somebody here collecting money for permits and stuff? Like, I've just had people message me about if they're gonna be...
If you want to know exactly how it's gonna work, we can talk in the chambers, and I can lay it down to you.
Okay, I was gonna suggest maybe y'all put a little announcement on Facebook saying what the real office hours are, so people can come if they need to conduct business on Fridays. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, I second.